Okay, the mute is off. Can you hear anything? Paula. Somebody give a thumbs up.
I can hear you.
You guys hear us?
I can.
Yes.
So we're going out anyway.
Oh, good. I just can't. That's weird. I may need you to relay.
Okay.
How do I do that?
Looks like everybody else is on mute, though. Looks like Pete and Brian is on mute. I don't know.
No, that's all right.
Should we call in?
Let me flip back over to there because right now I'm on mute, too. All right, Mayor, are you calling it?
Yes, this call this meeting order.
I think they just need to be louder. They just need to be louder.
You hear me?
I can hear you.
Paula.
Okay, it's not coming through on Paula.
Paula, meeting order so she can do roll call.
Roll call.
Heatherington. Ducastle.
Here.
Fredline.
Here.
Here with two children that graduated.
Nichols.
Here.
Rhoda Beck.
Here.
Giesler.
Here.
Phil Pepper.
Here.
Maybe it's my machine.
All right, open the floor up to public comment this evening. Is there anyone out there that has anything to address to this council that's not on the agenda?
I do.
Who is I do?
Everyone's thing just needs to be turned off.
Be who this is.
It sounds like it. Lisa, is that you that wants to speak?
There was my phone.
Yes, it was Lisa, but she's muted.
Lisa, you need to unmute yourself so we can hear you.
Okay, let me do it again. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Oh, excellent, excellent. Okay, real quickly, I just have a couple of fast things. I wanted to just approach this as a former first grade teacher in the Langsberg Schools. As a parent, we had two children that graduated in the Langsberg Schools, and as a business owner, my husband and I have the two buildings that will be facing the possible 105 East Grand River. We have the clothesline in the building next door. So I wanted you to understand where I'm coming from this as a parent, as a teacher, as a business owner. And my first question is, what kind of image is this portraying for our city? I love Langsberg. We've been here since 2000. We have lots of people moving into Langsberg, school of choice parents coming in, lot of activity happening at the high school and the other elementary building and the middle school. So I just am concerned about the image of our city, very much concerned.
Okay, well, thank you. Your comments are noted.
Okay, and is there any response from the council on how this impacts the things I just mentioned?
At this time, council is not obligated to respond to public comment. We have items on the agenda that we will necessarily get to.
Okay, thank you. All right. I had another concern, Mike, on the parking. I listened to the planning commission meeting from September 21st, and I love the cute little tables and the chairs out in front of our building, but at the same time, that took a little bit from parking, and now I'm concerned, we do have customers, volunteers, myself included, who need parking spaces, so that is a concern. I know one of the things I heard within 300 feet, there's 110 spots. I'm not obviously going to go down and start counting parking spots around the clothesline, but I was just curious about parking. Signage, because it is going to be directly across the street from the clothesline, what that's going to look like. I heard Mr. Brayman say he wants it aesthetic, I believe is the word he used, and historic, which I believe that is Langsberg, and I'd like it to stay that way. And my biggest concern is the children in our community. As a former teacher, I have volunteers, many of them teenagers, that work at the clothesline. Many of them come down to visit the clothesline or the town tub or to get their haircut or go get food at one of the restaurants, so I am very concerned about them as well. So those are my four concerns. Thank you very much for noting them and listening, and, like I said, I love Langsberg and I want the best for our town. I really do. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? No other public comment? All right, if not, we will move on to item number three on your agenda.
Would you like me to respond now, or I was going to wait until the agenda time?
Pardon?
This is Marcus Brayman. Would you like me to respond at this point, or would you like me to wait?
No, I want you to wait till we get to it.
Perfect.
Thank you. Item number three is approve the minutes of September 14th.
Take a motion to approve.
That sucks, huh?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussions? No discussion? Roll call.
Yes.
Fredline.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Rhoda Beck.
Yes.
Giesler.
Yes.
Phil Pepper.
Yes. Motion to approve the minutes from September 14th. Carry treasurer's report. Motion to accept.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Rhoda Beck, second by Mr. Ducastle. Any discussion? No discussion? Roll call.
Ducastle.
Yes.
Fredline.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Rhoda Beck.
Yes.
Giesler.
Yes.
Phil Pepper.
Yes. Motion carried on the treasurer's report. Item number five. Is consideration a petition for special land use and final site plan approval at 105 East Grand River Road to convert office retail to marijuana retailer and processor? Take a motion to open the floor up for discussion.
All moved. Support.
Motion and a second. The floor is open for discussion. Mr. Brayman?
Yes.
If you would like to comment at this point in time about the questions at hand or whatever that came out in public comment, I'll let you go there and then council will take over.
Thank you. First, I want to thank everybody for continuing the discussion on this. I am completely understanding and sympathetic to Ms. Jelinek's concern, and I'll try to quickly address the ones that she brought up. We could go with the signage. I know she has concern with the signage with the building basement. Our intent for this building is to be to assimilate with the city. We don't want to stand out. We don't want to be the sore thumb. We are actually, my business associates myself have been quite appalled by what you see when you used to drive through Lansing with the marijuana leaves and the big lights and the bars in the windows, and it just doesn't do anything for the city. Our goal is to be a good steward of the community. With that said, there are security protocols and measures that we have to take to be sure that we can not only be within good state of the state, but as well as the city, and as well as being a good steward to the community, as I mentioned. Those are to prevent people such as the teenagers from coming into the store. We will not have displays in the windows that entice people to come in, as I mentioned during the public hearing. Our clientele will know who we are or what we are. We don't need to try to entice the passerby. There's also a requirement from the state that there's a, and I always get this kind of mixed up, whether it's called a man trap or a man lock, but it's basically the double entryway vestalule that you would see in multiple locations. What that prevents is someone just walking in. You have to come in, be IDed, and then you have access into the building. So teenagers and children cannot just come into the store. That's definitely a measure that we're concerned with, and I think the state has done a fantastic job taking that out and placing that requirement on any applicant. As far as overall image, again, we believe we're just a new industry. I know that there's been an incredible stigma, but if we go back in time, there was an incredible stigma behind alcohol, and there's been significant changes to the marketplace as we know. So we want to be part of the community. We want to employ people in the community. We want to, if successful, we'd like to be a participant in community events, but not in a way that, again, puts a sore eye on the community. Langsberg was sought out because it did vote very heavily in favor of legalization of cannabis in 2018. It was roughly 66, 67% in favor, which was up towards the very top of the state. And we want to present ourselves in the most professional way possible. We want to come into this not allowing, we want to change the stigma in the visual that Lansing had provided. And so I hope that kind of addresses some of the concerns and questions that Ms. Jelinek had.
Lisa?
Yes.
Did he answer your questions appropriately for this moment?
I appreciate his responses. Yes, he's doing a wonderful job. I'm seeing it.
I just wanted to be sure he answered some of the concerns you had before we move on with council to get into their thing, so.
Is there any, can we talk about parking, or is that not the time to talk about the parking?
We will get into it as council. It's not a public comment time.
Okay, all right, all right.
Where council is going to get into this discussion.
All right, excellent. Thank you.
Uh huh. All right, council, as you know, is in your packet. I can keep my glasses clear enough to read. The planning commission did push this up to council for consideration. They are wanting a marijuana retailer and processor license through the city and then through the state. There have been lots of different concerns been brought forth, and Pete, I see you right there. I think that it'd be appropriate time for you to address council with your thoughts and some of our discussions we've had and kind of go with that and see what goes with us.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Great. So I think this has kind of been one of the outstanding developments that we've been hearing through the rumor mill at first concerning the Clotseth store there. We did have to come back before council and look at an extension because the applicant came to us and said due to COVID that they were not able to get the appropriate information back to the city to start talking about doing the special use permit and the licensing. At the planning commission level, I think that parking was addressed. There were some concerns that there was not parking in the immediate area and that there was a back parking lot that could be looked at. The problem was is that the applicant does not have total control of that back parking lot. So part of the conditions of the planning commission was for that a condition that the applicant participate in a city organized paving of that back area when it became available, because it would need all participants. We could not require the applicant to make off-site improvements, essentially improving the entire parking lot. So at that meeting, the planning commission put on there the condition that the applicant was to participate in there. Since that time, we've heard some other issues and concerns, one of those being the the processing and exactly how that would take place in the building. In some of our other clients, we deal with processing on a grand scale, being, you know, 80,000 square foot buildings where they're not only growing, but they're processing in there. I'm not an expert on processing. I did speak with the applicant earlier today, Mr. Brayman, and he did have some comments that he'd like to share with you as to what their intent for processing is, because it's not the size of building and scope of building that we'd be looking at with these large-scale growing and processing 80,000 square foot buildings. If I haven't hit on what the mayor was looking for, please guide me and I'll be able to add some more.
Yes, good. I know one of the concerns was the residency within 100 feet at the planning committee. Did you look into that at all?
I was unable to find anything specific to that. As you know, we do have the other retail that is further up the street that does have residential in its backyard. That was something else that the applicant offered as a restriction, and the planning commission followed up on, is that the upper story not be rented out for residential space.
But what if building attached to their building is that residency up above? Is that a problem?
What we're looking at right now is the special land use for zoning. The licensing through the city has no prohibitions on that from a residential dwelling unit, a distance. And to the best of my knowledge, the state does not, but if the state does, they will stop the licensing process at that point. But there's nothing in our zoning or our licensing that would prevent a conjoined building to have retail sales and processing, and then the adjacent building having a residential use.
And our company strongly encourages mixed use, which means we're strongly encouraging residents in our downtown to mix with our commercial in order to support them. So that is completely in line with all of our ordinances that we currently have. Our master plan, everything supports that.
I my apologies. I can speak to the processing if you guys so choose.
Is this Mr. Brayman?
Yes, sir.
Okay, yes, please do.
That's a concern, especially regarding odor.
Odor gases or flammable equipment.
Yes, and I fully understand the concern. Again, this industry being so new, a lot of the history comes from people operating out of their kitchens and pole barns. And the processing, I guess, let me dive into the processing just a little bit. Processing is an odd, is the oddity of the licensing, because it's not as straightforward as grow or retail or secure transport. You know, those are all very obvious. You're either growing or you're moving a product or you're selling a product. The processing can be anything from the extraction of the product of cannabis, turn it into a distillate, all the way to baking a brownie. So the part that is always most concerning is the extraction from, to creation of distillate. And the reason it's concerning is the most popular methods include either CO2 or butane. There is a method that includes alcohol that is done primarily on a very small scale, not as commercially viable, because there's just a lot of waste and it's incredibly dangerous. With the extraction portion, because of its danger, the state requires a special, for lack of a better word, a bomb-proof facility. They do make those sorts of units, and they are incredibly expensive. That is not at all something that we are looking to do. Our processor would act more along the lines as your local bakery. So you have a grower that grows the wheat, and you have a mill that would mill the wheat. They would actually, the mill would then act as a processor. And in the bakery, you would then buy the wheat as a flour and turn it into a cookie. What we would do is buy the wholesale oil, the distillate. The distillate does not come with an odor. It has already been processed down. The odor for the product is primarily on the buds and when they're in their, I guess, their wet phase, which is going to be right before you actually harvest. As they dry out, they start to lose some of their odor. As you process, you get rid of that odor. We would be buying it wholesale and turning, and then, so we'd be buying it from a processor and then turning it into a final product that goes to the end user. And with that said, the city, so the state offers the licenses, the city has the ability to constrict licenses far beyond any portion. We have no intention of doing extraction in that facility. If we did ever do extraction, it would be something that we would have to have the city come in and do full inspections, the county do inspections, and the state do inspections on the unit that we would have to purchase, like I said, because the unit has to be explosion-proof for any sort of extraction. And that all comes also down to the NFPA 1, which is the National Fire Protection Act, which is the code that the state follows for this. And there's a huge amount of verbiage in the fire code that discusses this, most of which is far beyond my intellect, but I have hired a consultant to review it and try to explain it to me to the best of ability. And again, it is, the concern is definitely there, but it is not the type of operation that we plan on doing. We would be buying from the people that do the extraction of the oil.
Odor should not be a big issue to them?
No, the odor, the main cause of the odor comes on the grow side. Both the extraction, if you were to wholesale purchase raw flour to do extraction, you could potentially have some odor that needs to be mitigated. Charcoal filtering would likely take care of all of it without an issue. The retail side, everything's prepackaged. When it is delivered, it's ready for go. The oil that we would be purchasing, again, would have already gone through the process, and they basically remove, you end up with almost a high potent THC that, it's just a, almost just like a pure alcohol type of a thing, where you're going to mix it in and turn it to something else. The odor that it has isn't powerful by any means. It's not something that is like what you would, what you know. If you drive by a building that is, you know, growing cannabis right now, you can smell it. That is not something that you get from the process. That comes, again, at the end stage of growth and then into that harvest, and then that odor starts to dissipate while it's drying. So the odor should not be an issue, but we will have odor mitigation processes in place in our storage vault. Not so much because we're worried that there's an odor from the product that we're getting, but in the event that some packaging gets wrecked, I mean, there's human error that happens with employees unloading trucks and getting stuff on display. If a package gets caught, we don't want it to spill on the floor and then people start smelling it. So we'll be putting a charcoal filtration system in our storage vault, and that should help mitigate any potential odor from the wholesale product when it comes into the facility.
So you're telling us, if I understand you correctly, this is the mayor, basically, you're going to buy a pre-mix, and I'm going to use supermarket terms, you're going to buy a pre-mix flour, and you're going to bring it to the store. Somebody's going to put it in a mixing bowl. They're going to mix it up, and they're going to bake it in the oven, and that's going to be the product.
That's it. That's basically what the processing portion of our business does.
That is, there is no gas. You're not using any gas, no CO2, no alcohol?
No, we are not using the butanes and the alcohols and the CO2s to extract. Again, those are for taking the raw flour and extracting, kind of squeezing or juicing the oil out of the plant. We are not going to be doing that.
I think that was a big concern.
That was where I was coming from.
And I understand, and it's because the processing license is so vague and broad, that that's an absolutely just concern, because when someone says process, you have no idea what portion of processing they're trying to do. And one side of it is highly scientific, highly combustible, and again, like I said, the state requires these bomb-proof facilities to even do that sort of thing. We have no desire to touch bomb-proof anything, and that is, that's going to be the people we buy it from that have put in these million-dollar facilities with bomb-proof rooms. Our goal is to then take the product that they make and then turn it into a more usable end product, whether it be a ment or we actually have a business that we're part of that creates these drinkables that are becoming quite popular out west, so teas and stuff like that.
My problem is the licensing is so broad with everything. That's the problem I got with it. That's one of them. So you hit the nail on the head when you said licensing is so broad with it.
You're telling me that, you're telling this council that under the processing, that you would have no problems under our contingencies of there are no gases that can be used?
No extraction.
No extraction on its own, but you buy the product, make it yourself as far as the baking, and you do not have any interest in renting up the upstairs?
Absolutely. Yeah, we have, there is absolutely no plans to do any sort of extraction in that building, and we are happy to accept that as a restriction on the license.
So you have somebody that went through training to know how much of this THC or this product gets mixed in with the brownies, cookies, or whatever?
Yes, so we have, again, I mentioned, we have a business associate, or we've put a significant amount of money in to buy a portion of the company that, this is what they do. They create a product. It meets the state standards for THC content. Most of the products that they come out with are in the 10 to 15% THC range, which is actually lower than most of the flour that you can buy from the stores. It's going to be something that's going to be like a, I guess, like a bottle of vodka or something that you could light on fire. So even if there was a spill, it's not going to be a flammable product. So, and to answer your question, to make sure that people aren't getting dosed improperly, yes. This goes again back to some of the state requirements on how the product is marked. All product has to go through the safety testing, in which they will then determine what level of THC, what potency is in there, what proteins are in there. If you create a CBD product, what the CBD levels are. And if you do not meet the standards and requirements that the state has, they will not allow you to sell. If they find later that a batch was mislabeled, it will get recalled, and many products have been recalled by the state. And then on top of that, every product that is tested and then sold has to be identified with a label as far as what the levels of THC are. This is done a lot because of what had happened in the old market, where people may get, such as a gummy bear or something like that, and overdo what they were expecting, because the product wasn't properly labeled as what the levels were.
So I have a question for you. Would you be willing to sign a condition of a condition of extraction of not using the butane protein, the CO2 extraction, and all that?
Yes, like I said, you guys have the full authority to create the restrictions on our licensing. So not only am I happy to sign that, I'm at the will of the city as far as what we are actually allowed to do. So by all means, that is, again, it's a restriction that falls within our business plan, because we do not plan to do any of the extraction simply because of the danger factor.
Go ahead, Gail.
Okay.
Lean forward.
I gotta lean forward. You guys can hear me, hopefully. So I'd like to say that I really wrote this comment before hearing some of the things that this owner has said. I feel a little bit different, but I still want to make the comment that I feel like we need to think about while we make this vote, I guess. So I wasn't on the council when this all started. I'm kind of new. So some of these things that were decided were before me. But I do think there's two aspects to this vote. There's the financial aspect. I do feel like having a, you know, a building field, having someone that will put money into our town, sounds like they would engage with our city. I feel like that is beneficial. I feel like both of the business owners that, that are doing this are proven business owners. They're not fly by night. They, they, you know, one is proven himself and in the business sense, in the law industry and the other one in the actual industry that were, that he'll be doing businesses. Just to think about is the social aspect. I have lost some sleep over this decision. And I just want everybody to think about, when I was losing sleep, I thought about how many cities our size have two of these, and I couldn't find any. So, I mean, I've spent my time trying to have a community that people want to come to school here. They wanted school of the choice. It's a family thing. And I've heard the comment, well, we have two bars. We have two gay cares. Well, that's true, but I don't see it quite like that. I see it more like it's two casinos. It's two lion steps. The size of our town, we are going to get noticed for this aspect. Do I say it's wrong? I think everyone's going to decide. I don't think my votes can really matter in this aspect. But I do feel like the council needs to start thinking too about the social aspects. Like, like Lisa said, the schoolers, yes, they're not going to come into the facilities because he's going to be a responsible business owner and not let them in. But they're still going to be walked past that to go down to the town tub. I'm already getting people that are asking me about it and it hasn't even happened. I do think that this vote having two is going to get us noticed. Hopefully it works out good, but it is a concern of my part. So I just, I just wanted to encourage, want to think about, financial is important, but sometimes we also have to think about the social ramifications of this.
My issue with it is you get the planning businesses, um, you know, there as well as the housing part of it. And the parking just really stinks around there. Really no parking, um, you know, for, for that as well. I mean, for what they're wanting to do. I don't know. I, I, I don't see it there. I really don't, from what we discussed previously on all this. This is all the businesses surrounding it. How close, closely are in proximity?
Okay, 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 so look. This is Councilman Fredlin. The moral question about whether we have pot shops or not was settled in 2018 by the, by the, the, the voters in Michigan. They voted 60%, they wanted. And then we went in as a city and said, here's an economic opportunity. And we voted for four shops. Now we cut that in half and have two shops. So I think already the scale of what we were dealing with has already been cut by 50%. The moral question, whether you like pot or not, not was decided by a democracy in a vote of 60% to 40%. So that moral question, you can still have it. But we're in a democracy. We voted for four pot shops. I was crossing my fingers we wouldn't get four and we didn't get four. Now we have two. And we have two responsible business owners that are bending over backwards to help this council and this city provide a new industry. And it not as, and it's half as big as we thought it was going to be. Now they have vest, they have invested time, money, effort and bent over backwards to meet every one of our requirements. It is no longer a moral question. So the thing that I wanted to hear from Marcus, and I appreciate that, Marcus, I was concerned about the processing aspect of it and the public safety aspect of it. If you were going to have butane or propane or CO2, well, that question has been answered to my satisfaction that it does not pose a health and safety risk. Because they're not going to process here. They're going to buy the flour and they're going to bake the brownies here. So I'm okay with that. So that's my probably 50 cents, not two cents.
Mayor, I'd like to, uh, talk about the parking for a second. When, um, in, in our downtown, we have, uh, limited parking. However, I've done, I've done, done some parking studies. I'm pretty sure the mayor helped me. Um, and we have plenty of parking spaces. You just can't park out in front of your business sometimes and walk in the door. You may have to walk down a couple storefronts to get to your door. In addition, I don't know that I've ever seen Roosevelt Row overflowed with parking or the parking lot behind the other businesses. So, um, I think when we think about parking and we start saying we can't put a business somewhere because we don't have parking, what use would you put there that would have no parking? Does cloths have parking? What if you wanted to put a hair salon in there? Would you need parking? What if you want to put hair salons in other buildings? Or, I mean, I think you need to think about this. Like what if another dance studio came to town? Would we say no? What if another restaurant came to town? Because restaurants require parking. Uh, do we not want any more restaurants? What about the mixed use where we're encouraging people to live in downtown? Uh, are they allowed to have cars if we want them to live here? You can't grow this city and not put parking beside the point. Because people are going to park wherever they have to park if they really want to go somewhere. And we're trying to create an atmosphere where people want to come here and where they want to go somewhere. If, if you go to East Lansing, do you ever have to walk somewhere? Cause I do. If I go to a basketball game at the high school, I don't get to park right in front of the door. I think you need to think about what you want for parking and how you want to strategically plan all of your future approvals if you're going to approve them based on parking that doesn't exist. We can't create more parking unless you want to start building parking ramps.
If I may follow up on, on Paula and Mr. Fredline's comments. With the, this, this particular, uh, issue right now is a zoning level. Mr. Fredline is accurate in that the, the moral question was answered once you folks amended the zoning ordinance and created the licensing. But more importantly, the zoning ordinance, because the zoning ordinance was created to govern the use of the site. And if they met all those requirements and did not have an impact through the special land use on adjacent properties, then it should be approved. The applicants offered and the planning commission has also provided some, uh, exclusions and some restrictions on there. At the point that you say that you do not, you know, want this particular use, that matter was already settled by previous, previous council, previous, uh, planning commission, uh, to allow for this use unless it can be shown they do not meet the requirements. Now, as far as the licensing, when it was first established, the two was selected so that there could be some competition so that you didn't run the risk of, of having, uh, one person to quote unquote monopolize. And I thought that was interesting. Uh, I think it says a lot about the city of Langsberg to encourage that type of competition. Uh, with those particulars and that it has, this would, this would be the only two licenses for adult retail sales, uh, in the community. We opened it up for a broad area so that the city council would have the ability under licensing to essentially pick and choose, uh, who is going to be here. You don't have that necessarily, that ability under zoning, but you do under licensing. And as I think said, that you do have two, uh, quality type of applicants as opposed to some of the others in other areas that we had dealt with that are not quality applicants. Uh, but I would be cautious about exclusionary zoning or restricting this use, uh, based on, on zoning. If it comes to the licensing and you don't find that Mr. Bremen has the quality and character and, and his associates that they're going to do a good job, that's a whole nother ballgame.
So Pete, if, uh, if we were to make a motion to approve this on the condition that there would be no extraction process, is that going to be a, a problem with the zoning?
No, I think because the city has had a previous concern with growing, uh, it being, uh, not in, in buildings that have, share a common wall. Um, I think that you have good grounds to say something into effect that extraction from raw marijuana using CO2, alcohol, butane and/or other potentially flammable explosive or combustible gases or liquids is prohibited. And I can provide that to you, Paula, later if it moves forward.
And Mr. Bremen, you are in agreement with that stipulation?
Uh, very much so, yes.
Thank you.
Well, with that extraction, no extraction, uh, do we need to put in or no running upstairs as well in case a business is sold down the road or?
Yeah, uh, so, uh, uh, again, uh, some of the concern, I have no concern putting something like that in there. Uh, I think it, it's kind of, it's almost a mute point because of some of the state laws that are out there that would already prohibit that. But if you guys want that in there, I am totally okay with, uh, not allowing apartments upstairs. It's, it's not something we want. It's not something we want to take the, uh, responsibility for and the, and the liability for. And, uh, we would probably rather just have a little bit of office space or something like that in up there.
Just remember when, if you're going to put that in there as a stipulation, that we do encourage mixed use in our downtown in our zoning ordinance.
And that is correct. I, I did ask the question just based on the fact of the, uh, condition that now that there's agreement that there's no chemicals or fire flammable, then it takes a lot of that risk out of there.
Agreed.
And the office space upstairs is, you know, welcome as well as if, you know, in my mind, if there's no explosions, this is just me talking, there's no explosion, no chemicals that's going to cause harm to people next door that's staying for the weekend and stuff like that. And I don't see it's any different than one down the street.
Yeah, my feeling is you could probably raise the rent and you'd get 100 people wanting to rent that apartment.
If somebody wanted to cut a hole through us.
Yeah, no, thank you, Mr. Bremen. You have, uh, bent over backwards and, and really, uh, I, I think satisfied the zoning requirements and certainly satisfied, uh, to my mind, my public safety, uh, issues with the processing. So I appreciate those, uh, transparent and straight up answers. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, guys.
Is there anyone else that has anything else to say about this? I think every council member here has basically had a question or concern or whatever that they have to do. So I guess we're to the point where.
Motion to approve the licensing.
I will second that as long as there's a condition that there is no extraction processes, uh, being done with it.
Agreed. With that stipulation, motion.
And does that include the waivers regarding landscaping, parking and paving? Or is that a new, is that another?
You, you weren't there, but the, the landscaping and so forth is all pretty much done by the DVA out front and so forth. So if I understood correctly from the meeting, that, that was really nothing that we can require them to do because we're actually doing it anyway outside.
Okay, I was just reading it off.
Yes. So I believe if I'm not mistaken, that was the answer that we come up with in planning, as far as the plants, the flowers and everything out there because the DDA does that.
If you are accepting the planning commission's recommendation, then you would accept that those waivers would be passed and then you're going to add the language that Pete read earlier.
Okay.
Okay, that was, that was my question. Thank you.
So that is the motion to approve the planning commission's recommendation and approve the application for licensing. Under the terms and stipulations.
We don't have an application for licensing yet. This is just a special land use and a final site plan approval.
Special land use as, uh, as recommended by planning committee, so moved.
I support.
We have a motion and support. Have one more time for discussion, counsel? If not? Roll call.
Duke Castle.
Yes.
Fredline.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Rota Beck.
Yes.
Jezler.
No.
Cole Pepper.
Yes. Motion carried. The consideration petition for special land use. Item number six, consider an amendment to zoning ordinance to provide outside seating and drink dining standards. Auging glasses. And right here, we need a motion to accept the recommendations of the planning commission following a public hearing by the planning commission that was held on September 21st to approve the following amendment. The city of Langsberg zoning ordinance to provide standards for outside seating and dining area.
Motion to approve.
Support. And motion to support. Any discussion? All right, roll call.
Yes.
Fredline.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Rota Beck.
Yes.
Jezler.
Yes.
Cole Pepper.
Yes. Motion carried. Item number seven, trick or treat or Halloween, whichever way you want to say it. Open the floor up for discussion.
Second.
I made the motion open the floor up for discussion. Alan made the second. Trick or treating. How does council feel about allowing the kids out, running around?
I don't have a problem with it.
Yeah, personally, since they've done their studies and the science all says that young kids, 9.9% that they'll be fine. So with that being said, why take this away from the kids? They're, they're young. They're only going to be young once. Let them have fun. And if people want to give candy out, that's their choice. Don't take it away from the kids.
If they don't want to do it, then they don't. If they don't want to go, they don't go.
I mean, yeah, that's my opinion. Let them decide for themselves.
And the chief is fine with the, the safety protocol of it. Um, we talked a little bit. We decided that maybe it would be great for the kids to get a little energy out. And patrons of the city, if they want kids to come to their house, we talked about maybe getting your porch lights turned on. That way kids would know that you're coming, that you're welcome on the, them to your house. And then also recommend that the kids substitute their mask of a costume for a regular mask. As we know that they're not going to be able to social distance that well. So that's recommendation between, uh, comments between the chief and myself. Uh, but counsel, you have that opportunity to put it in play.
I second, uh, what you just said, what the chief recommended, what you and the chief discussed.
I put it in a motion form that we allow Halloween. Is it six to eight o'clock? Is that the normal hours?
Yes.
Okay, with the normal hours, six to eight?
Yes.
Since that Lord would like to participate and have kids come as far as the city folks, please turn your lights on. And kids, please wear a mask and everybody have a safe, a Halloween.
Okay, so we are not officially sanctioning, um, trick or treating, but we are not officially not allowing it. We're saying if you will voluntarily, uh, uh, participate in trick or treating door to door, that Langsberg, the city of Langsberg will place no restriction on that. However, we are not actively promoting that. We are just saying it is an option and a personal choice based on CDC guidelines and based on the health and safety protocols that have already been readily established. And you can, you, you're, you're big boys and girls and, and big parents. And you can make your own decisions. But we are not, as a city, broadcasting that we are sanctioning trick or treating. We are simply going to do what we have done in the past and allow it from six to eight and not stop it. And it is your choice. And we are not officially sanctioning a, a Halloween trick or treat event, correct?
Sounds good to me. It is everyone's responsibility to go out on their own if that's what they want to do.
Okay, and we can make that clear in the communication. I am all for it.
I already put that out in the newsletter.
Yep, I, I saw that and that's why I wanted to reiterate that this is not a Langsberg sanctioned six to eight trick or treating time. This is a precedent setting as we have done in the past. And you make your own decision based on the, the, the level of risk that you are, that you are willing to accept with your friends, with your friends and family, okay? And I am just happy with that. My lights will be on. And by the way, I saw on, on a Facebook post where this guy had got a six inch tube of PVC. And it was about, oh, I would say eight feet long. And he would sit on his porch, have the kids open up their bag at the end of the tube. And he would throw the candy down the tube and it would land right in their bag. So let's get creative.
So we need this in a form of a motion. I think we've already had it in clarification and everything. So do we need to vote on this, Paula, to continue it?
Um, you have a motion on the floor.
Yeah, so we'll do a roll call vote and then we'll do it as that we're allowing it, but we're not sanctioning it and so forth.
Okay.
Duke Castle.
Yep.
Fredline.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Rota Beck.
Yes.
Giesler.
Yes.
Culpepper.
Yes. All right, trick or treat Halloween will go on if people choose to do it. Item number eight is reaffirm city of Langsberg master plan.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Or. Report by Rota Beck. Discussion. No discussion? Roll call.
Duke Castle.
Yes.
Fredline.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Rota Beck.
Yes.
Giesler.
Yes.
Culpepper.
Yes. And carried, number nine, introduce the DDA plan update schedule of public hearing.
I think we're going to end up needing to table that. I talked to the RRC people today. And they felt the plan was lacking some items that we need to add to it.
Motion to table.
Did I hear a motion to table?
Yeah, Councilman Fredline.
I second that.
Ms. Nichols, all right, motion second. Any discussion beyond that? Roll call to table.
Duke Castle.
Yes.
Fredline.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Rota Beck.
Yes.
Giesler.
Yes.
Culpepper.
Yes. Able, item number 10 is accept council resignation from Mary Heatherington.
So moved. Second.
Motion second, discussion?
Can we add to it? Which was written here, which does make a lot of sense. In sense, we now have an open fourth seat that the fourth highest vote getter be appointed to that seat. I mean, logically makes a lot of sense.
It's in due practice in the past.
We need to accept the resignation first.
And that's what we're going to do. Roll call.
Duke Castle.
Yes.
Fredline.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Rota Beck.
Yes.
Giesler.
Yes.
Culpepper.
Yes.
Now, now we officially have an opening and we can discuss how to fill it.
Right. And in past practice, in a lot of cases, it's been the high vote getter that we go back to and ask if they'd like to serve. So I guess that's a question to this council is, do you want to follow past practice and take the four high vote getters to fill the seats? Which makes a lot of logical sense since you have an election. But that isn't.
Do we need a motion to that effect?
I'll make such motion.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second to take the fourth highest elected vote to fill the fourth seat of the council that's open from Mary Heatherington. Any discussion?
Why change precedent? We've done it that way and we'll do it that way again. That's my opinion.
Okay.
That way politics don't get involved and you know, our, our constituents can make the decision, not us.
Yep, and that's the whole point of it is you got a chance to vote for four out of five people for a position, so. Paula, we need to vote on that?
Yes, you do.
Okay.
Duke Castle.
Yes.
Fredline.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Rota Beck.
Yes.
Giesler.
Yes.
Culpepper.
Yes. Motion carried. Accept the resignation of Mary and to also go with the fourth. Number 11 is pay the bills.
So moved.
Second.
Or motion second twice between Nichols and Rota Beck. Any discussion? Roll call.
Duke Castle.
Yes.
Fredline.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Rota Beck.
Yes.
Giesler.
Yes.
Culpepper.
Yes. Motion carried, pay the bills. Move on to committee reports. DDA is on the top of the packet. As you can see, I guess, a quick report on that, unless Paula can add to it, is you see the pavilion out in the park or the bandstands going up and they have been working and discussing those things and other future projects. So that's about where they're at. Is there anything else, Paula, on the DDA that they may need to know about that I may have missed thought wise?
I don't think so.
Okay, I just, in case something hot that I missed on my mind. All right, DPW.
We had some requests from the library to do some upgrades. Some painting, and get some work on the front of the building. And I know, I wonder what the council feels about this. I understand that, you know, it's our building. We need to keep it, you know, as a pit building. We need to keep it upgraded with a point. But if we're going to do remodeling, if we're going to refinish the outside, paint the outside, power wash the outside and, you know, try to I guess bring to the, what the rest of the city is looking like. Shouldn't that be coming out of the library's budget instead of DPW's or the city budget?
Yeah, that's what we agree on now.
I guess I'm, I'm, I mean, I'm out of the library board and, and Sandra said something about it. I thought she asked for power washing, touching up the paint, and there's some brickwork that actually gets I thought was submitted.
If we have brickwork that needs to be done, I understand, talking and taking care of it. I understand that some of the windows may need caulking. I get it, you know, it's winter time. But, you know, power washing the building and painting, especially in the fall. I mean, that's, that's not really a good time of year to even bring it up. You know, that's a springtime, summertime project, not a, not a getting close to winter project.
I do know she brought it up in the summer, but I don't know when it was submitted.
First time I seen it was this last.
We just saw it at this DPW meeting.
But, you know, there's talk about redoing the front, opening up the scene with the, you know, facade or whatever was in the front of the building and trying to restore it. And, you know, if we were to take on a project like that, I think it would have to be part of the library fund paying for it.
Paula?
Yes.
Isn't there a, a fund? And I don't know if it was Friends of the Library or isn't there some pot of money that we were going to use i- in, in, in the unlikely event that we would actually rebuild and replace the library?
Yes.
Is there a way that we can access those funds? Or would it have to come out of budgeting?
The city council is in charge of those funds that were donated for a new library building.
So that's a restricted fund just for a new building, not for rebuilding or remodeling the current building.
Well, right, but the city council would be the only people who could make any kind of motion that would change the restriction on those funds.
Exactly. I mean, if.
The library building fund account has $157,000 in it.
And that won't build a new library, but it sure as hell will improve the one that we've got.
I would think if the library and the city were in agreement to do that, that we could probably do a really nice job of making the front of that library look like the rest of downtown. I found a picture before it was covered up where it shows what it used to look like with the bricks on it and stuff. And I think they're probably underneath there.
I would think in general that because we own the building, anything that needs to be repaired such as caulking or maybe some brickwork or some masonry fill or something like that, I think we ought to get on it and address it. Now, when it gets to the point of power washing, changing the face of the building and stuff, I do believe that then we need to talk about how we're going to fund this and how we're going to do it and way it's going to be done. And I do believe it needs to be done on a collaborative basis with everybody with the library and city council. They have the money. It is our building, but there's also going to be some commitment to their part to be able to make it look better and stay in there. But in general appearances, we take care of the apartment and the building downstairs. We try to take care of that. So any general maintenance, I would think we would go ahead and do that. But it's still up to council and DPW where the cutting line is.
Right. What I'd like to see is the library board come back with a proposal of what they would actually like to have done. And maybe turn that into request for contractors to actually come in and bid the work that they want done.
Yeah, I, I would agree with that. We don't want to take their money that they have raised. But, you know, if it's just sitting there and we have a need without rebuilding an entire library, which is absolutely not doable, then put together a plan as a library board and, and present it to council and, you know, I'm, I'm more than prepared to give a blessing on that if it's a viable plan.
That's the way I feel about it.
Yeah, I, I think. I, okay, I, I guess I'm out of the library board. I talked to Sandra about this. I feel like the painting and caulking falls on the city as a maintenance. If we're talking about redoing something, I think that that would fall on the library. That is my, my opinion. I, I think general maintenance of that building, you know, the normal touching up the paint. And if there's brickwork that's actually structurally going to bother your building, I, I do feel like that falls on the city. That is my opinion. If we're redoing the building, then I'm okay with pulling it out of money. But when people give you money for a purpose, I mean, that's what it's supposed to go to. I know we can make a ruling and change that, but I feel like our relationship with the library has, has had issues in the past. And I just feel like I'd like to move on and I don't think that's a lot to ask for.
No, agreed, but we got $150,000. The revenue stream has dried up. You can't even put a roof on a library for $150,000, let alone build another one. So we can either take that money as seed money and raise additional funding with the goal of building a new library or using that money to fix up the one that we have and make it better. And I don't care, I don't care if it comes out of the city's money or their money. It needs to be done.
We still need that agreement that talks about who's responsibility is what and that might help clean up the situation. So that everybody knew what maintenance meant to the building versus improvements?
Right. Well, I think that, you know, DPW or the city should be responsible for any general maintenance or any structural concerns. But if we're going to do remodels, new carpet, new paint, new whatever throughout the building, or if we're changing the facade in the front and trying to, you know, bring it to what we're doing with the rest of the city, I think the library needs to kick in some money for it.
So I guess where do you want to leave this? We've discussed the city. Might be generally for general repairs with that, but the.
Some type of a contract written up between the library and the city as to who's responsible for what.
We have an agreement that they just.
Okay.
So they, Gale can take that back and address that to them on that part. To the library that there is an agreement that needs to be addressed and that will help the problem some or the situation. It's not a problem. It's a situation. Excuse me. So I guess that, you know, under that situation, we probably just table that and see what Gale comes back with. Maybe if we come back with agreement and the council, I think, is in a general agreement right now, but general maintenance and stuff is our responsibility, but if there's going to be some pretty and done and some decorating that we all need to apply, so. And get.
Just get the scope, just get the scope of work, present it to the council and we'll figure out who pays for it.
Yeah. And concerning that same thing, I think I've talked to Dave a little bit about it. I don't know if I've ever talked to Gale about the library, but I think as this council, we ought to, because of, well, we've heard it tonight. And Dave made the statement that, well, we got, just got the information and Gale says what was done sometime in the summer. I think we need to have work orders come from the library on things they'd like to be done and dated and a timeframe so that we know when we get them, we're handling them appropriately and it isn't six months later that we get told.
I can tell you on this particular thing, Sandra said something to me and I thought she was interacting with Dave. I did talk to Dave.
Okay.
So it, it's been going on, you know, and he said to me, he was so busy with that. And I said, I understand that whatever happens, working, you know, working in. I'm just concerned because of timing of, you know, the weather.
Right.
So I know I've had a discussion with Sandra and that Dave, I don't know how Sandra submitted it to Dave. I, that I don't know. I just am aware of that there was, she had showed me where the brickwork was a problem out front. And she said she wanted the paint touched up because there is some issues right there. But I'm not, I didn't hear the whole, like redo anything, I guess, in my mind.
Well, that was in the library board minutes.
Okay, and I was not there. I did not.
Where all that information is coming from. It's in your packet and it's.
Okay. Okay.
And that's why I finally went to my committee last month because Sandra finally sent me over a piece of paper. I asked her exactly what are you looking for? And that's what went to my committee.
And I think that's what really needs to be done every time, just so that there is no communication factors or breakdowns. I mean, if it's.
And I think that, you know, Dave has no issues going over and caulking and taking care of the maintenance things. But anything that is like large that should be dealt with during the budgeting time period needs to come to us when we're talking about budgeting. And it needs to be, it needs to be a little more thoughtful as far as, you know, we, you know, we can't just like spend 50 grand fixing up the front of it this week, you know, we need to budget for those kinds of things.
No, I'd like to see.
I guess we'll table that. You know, I'd like to table that until the agreement signed or brought to the library for the, see if they do sign it. And we'll go from there.
Is that a motion to table?
Yes.
It's not on the agenda.
It's under committee reports.
It just, it doesn't need to be tabled. It's not on.
Okay.
All right.
I hope they, they're able to raise more money so they can get a new library one of these days. It would be nice. A lot bigger library would be real nice downtown.
We also had a bid to install a new high temp heating and cooling in the police department. It's a furnace, $2,997 and that includes a permit fee. We requested bids from three or four different contractors. Only one bid came back. So, I guess I make a motion that we approve that bid for two thousand nine hundred ninety-seven dollars.
I'll second that.
High temp heating, cool head temp.
Nobody else answered them.
Right. So, motion on the table, on the floor for, uh, twenty-nine hundred ninety-seven dollars for a furnace for the police department, uh, through high temp. We have that motion for money from the DPW. We have second?
Yes.
I have second.
Okay, and now discussion? All right, Paula, roll call.
Du Castle.
Yep.
Redline.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Rota back.
Yes.
Giesler.
Yes.
Cole Pepper.
Yes. That's it for the DPW. Um, LSW is not present. Uh, do we have a police report or not this morning?
No. No, we don't have a police report. I've been sidelined for those weeks yet. Did want to report.
So. I'll excuse you. And the library?
Yeah, like I said, I was not actually, which is, I know, but I was not at the meeting. Um, I had some issues, so I was not there. Obviously, they submitted the minutes, and there was some discussion about the repair and stuff. Yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you. All right, if that's, if I haven't missed anything, which I usually do.
We're planning, but we just discussed the three items tonight.
Right.
Oh, that's already been done.
Uh, others. We have on this list here, you have in your packet, we have Winterfest, uh, in there. You see that you got better information on road paving tone and the actual amphitheater structure is being installed, as you can see, uh, if you went by the park. You got the information for the Winterfest. What they would like to do. Different days. It's gonna be a week-long affair, basically, with different items going on at different times of the week. Stuff the bus is gonna be going on all week long in front of the east. ECDC, I guess. Is that how you say it? ECDC or EC? Okay. And, uh, that will be there for a week. Uh, the trees, uh, be decorated and so forth that are donated. Um, parade route that, uh, has got five options, and I wasn't sure which one was what, so.
I'm trying to get to the information. I'm not being rude, sorry.
No, that's all right. I'm just covering and making time on others before.
Mike?
Yeah.
Mike, it's, uh, it's Greg.
Yes, Greg.
For, for the parade, I, I just gave you guys two different options, option one and option five. Um, I didn't know if, if we need to shut the roads down, and option five would be too, too extravagant for that, or if we wanna just go with option one. The idea with the parade is we wanna try to get it through the city more, so that way people don't have to go to one area to congregate and gather. Uh, they can stay more outside their, their houses, or, um, like, maybe a church parking lot where they have more spacing to gather. Um, that's kind of why we changed the route a little bit, just to get it through more of the city roads, so people don't have to move around in one big area.
So Greg, I know we talked about this a little bit. Um, since I've talked to you, I kinda talked to somebody on the city council over in Owassee, because obviously they're in Owassee too. And I guess they submitted something on the health. You, you've submitted it too, right, for approval?
For the health department?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I talked to Larry over there. Um, he says they, they strongly advise not to have gatherings. That's why we were thinking this more of a route of, of how the parade was, because I believe Ovid LT did one, um, and they went through a lot more of the, the roads, so people didn't have to, you know, gather in other areas. They can just come outside their houses, so that way there's socially space, and that's kind of the idea behind the different route of the parade, so people don't have to go in other areas for more to stand around and be too close.
Right.
Um, and that's just kind of what we're looking for, to see what your guys' approval is.
So the other idea that, that came up when we were talking, because, um, I don't know if he's approved that or not, but you could consider, um, what, which, what I think that they're doing over there is stationary, um, which means you're driving your car past it.
Okay.
I don't know if that's gonna be the case. I mean, maybe he'll say it's fine, but it sounds like that that's might be what they're gonna end up doing over there. That's just my two cents.
Okay, yeah, I can call Larry and just double check on him. Um, and, and I can show him the route, too, um, just to see exactly what he wants, but I'd rather go get you guys' approval first to figure out which ones you're more comfortable with, and, you know, if, if the health department shuts it down, then I'll let you guys know at that point, too.
Hey Greg, this is Dan.
The, uh. Was somebody else speaking?
Dan's trying to talk.
Okay, well then, glad, glad to hear from you.
Um, since I'm back this week, I will get with you on a possible route. Um, I just learned about how many times we're crossing Grand River, going back and forth, and traffic getting in between the parade, so I'll touch base with you this week.
Okay, that works.
And all I was gonna comment and say is, Greg, is from what I seen, I didn't see too much that anything that stood out to me that was different other than the parade, and so you guys have got that kind of locked down now with the chief. And I was figuring he would step in there and say, you know, have a look at this.
Mm-hmm, right.
I don't see anything wrong with anything as long as the parade route goes and the health, uh, health department says, fine, I mean, you've got it pretty well planned the way things look. Looks like you guys put it together pretty nicely, so.
So we're not closing down roads?
What was that, Paula?
I was wondering if we are shutting down roads.
Well, that was gonna be determined by Dan.
So, the only people that can do that is the city council.
So Paula, are we, are we bumping up against the t- uh, timeline here, because I don't think we have a, a council meeting next month, correct?
Yeah, we do, November ninth.
Okay.
Right after the election.
So we, we can do it then.
So, so, can we make that decision then, or can we empower the mayor, the, and the police chief to make the decision on behalf of council tonight?
Dan said we can change, we can get it, um, figured out and do the motion next month.
Okay.
And so just while we're on there, everybody remember that we don't meet till the ninth in November.
Right.
Oh, okay.
I do have one question. So Greg, are you proposing that as far as the businesses downtown, if they have an activity, that they're not, they're not going to be having an activity, or are you proposing that if they have an activity, it's basically on them?
What do you mean by the activity? Like, uh, the decorating stuff, or?
Yeah, okay, I'll give you an example, but this is a bad example, so I'm trying to think of another. Because this is not a good example, but if, if Mike decided to still do the chili cook-off, which wouldn't be a good idea, because obviously it's food, whatever, but something like that. Some of the activities that we normally do that you're not doing, it looks like. Um, because I know on the ad it says something about if a business wants to have an activity, they should let you know, and you would promote it.
Yeah, I mean, sort of like, um, not, not like the, the gathers like we normally would for, like, Winterfest, but if they had, like, a, you know, some type of contest for their customers to do a decoration, and they can bring it in to show it. Something like that where, um, I mean, obviously, the CDC rules and regulations have gotta be followed. Um, you know, with the mixture of everything going on with the, with the governor and the, the judges, um, you who knows gonna be what's in place, but for a responsibilities section of the LBCA and the city of Langsberg, uh, we thought it'd be best to not have the congregation of people. So if, if, if they wanna have their own, their own, um, activities, as long as we on the LBCA think it's, it's appropriate, um, we would probably do something like that, but we'd have a discussion with the businesses, just to make sure it's like, is this, is this safe for everybody, regardless of how they personally feel, but from a standard, um, of regulations and business codes, um, is this something that you should be doing or should not be doing? If it's something that they, that we all agree will be fine, the health department approves it, then we would probably help them advertise it as well. Hope that answers your question.
Yeah, it does, because like, this is the ugly sweater contest. That, it could be something that could be done socially distancing and be done very easily. I thought of it then as I was thinking, but if somebody wants to have an activity in their business and they're meeting the criteria of what they're, they're telling us that we can have so many people or whatever, as long as they're doing those things, you would consider promoting it.
Yes, yes, we would.
Okay, well, we think it will, uh, let you know about next month on the road closing and stuff, but other than that, you really see a whole lot that concerns us too badly. I mean, as long as you follow CDC rules and all that stuff, that's, that's where we're at right now, and as long as I'm on your point of interest, all the staff and every employees of the city, I'd like to commend you on the chamber, how it looks today, any of that's not here. It's gorgeous compared to what we've been used to, so.
Looks very nice.
Well, okay. Uh, as you see, you get the bid information suit on Woodbury Road, and the amphitheater is being built. Uh, Paula, what else have you got for us?
Um, just wanna remind everybody about next month's meeting, and we have an election coming up, and we are busy in here with a lot of election ballot questions, um. So everybody has the option to either vote in person or drop their ballot off here, so that's all I got.
All right, well. You have one more thing?
Yeah, I just wanted to think. I don't know if Mary's watching or not, but I really, um, I'm gonna miss her on the council, and I'm glad that she was on it, so. I'm thanking her for her service to Iceberg.
Yeah, and I would make a note that we probably, it should be a letter sent thanking her for her service and a loss to the community of moving outside of the city, so. We could get that done. It would be wonderful there. All right, keep in mind, don't forget to vote. On the following Monday, your council meeting will be shifted from the first to the second week, basically, so make note of that. And good luck at the elections, and everyone be safe.
And I guess I'll keep you posted as to whether November ninth is video or not, depending on how all this court stuff comes out.
Yep, well, we'll have a better view of it by then, so.
Yeah. All right, motion to adjourn.
Adjourned.
This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for your cooperation this evening.
Well, I think Supreme Court slapped her down pretty good, though, in Michigan.
Uh, that's simply not true, Alan.